How you doing?
I'm fine, how are you?
Did you get that? That's no good enough.
I salute you. I do. No, you did what needed to be done, which is just awesome.
Needs to be done.
You know, that I have so many opinions there at times.
Oh, I know.
So I'm really, but I'm really grateful for you that you did this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, the, uh, we're, we're on the microphones. Microphones are on, okay? And we are live, okay?
Where's the shield? Where's the shield today?
My granddaughter.
Another thing that destroys that is if you leave it in the sun.
Yeah, well, my granddaughter thought it was something to wrap her dolls up. She destroyed my shield. Little face shield.
Haven't seen him for a long time.
No.
You mentioned that.
There's a couple of them.
Yeah, yeah. You got that quantity?
What's up?
You got that?
You can't hit something bigger than that ball. I was not a basketball.
Oh, I don't know. They weren't in my hand.
Not, that she added.
Okay, okay.
We are live.
Hey.
She's here, she's on the hall.
We've never heard anything. Here we go. We got one. Hi, I didn't charge.
Yeah, everything. Unfortunately, I'm disappointed, but not sure.
I saw that walking in. Tell me you guys ready down there? Looks like everybody's ready. So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners' regular monthly meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, and it is 7:01 PM, and we are assembled here in the Commissioners' Boardroom of City Hall. Actually, it looks like on that clock, it might be seven on my, on my phone, it's 7:01. If you do have any electronic devices, please mute them or turn them off at this time, we ask that you do. And, um, at this time, I will read the mission of the City of Oxford, which is to serve and improve our community by providing high-quality, affordable services, sound planning for growth and development, and by offering the highest possible quality of life while maintaining the public's trust through open communication and ethical standards at all times. And at this time, I would like to invite Reverend Jenny Wilson of, um, Oxford United Methodist Church to come forward, and for those who are so inclined, she will lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. O Lord, you have been our dwelling place in all generations, from everlasting to everlasting, you are God. We thank you this night, O Lord, for being our everlasting God and for the privilege of living here in this community. We thank you for all the ways you have protected us in the months that have passed. We thank you for the work we have before us, for the opportunity to listen well with one another, and to share our hearts with one another in words and actions that build one another up. As the Psalmist says, teach us, O Lord, to count our days, so we may gain a wise heart. We pray for a wise heart, led, guided, and shaped by you, so that together we, as this community, may join hearts and hands and work for the good of all. We pray this with thankful hearts in your gracious and holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend Wilson. At this time, our Mayor Pro Tem Calvin C. J. Harris will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pray that allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, we will consider adjustments to and approval of the agenda. I would like to ask that the board approve that we add a presentation to Ginny Curran, who was our former Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, to our delegation section. And I can't see anybody down at the other end. And also, you have at your seat an item from the Personnel Committee, and that was a miscommunication on my part, that we did not get this added to the agenda on time, um, which was to vote on a pay raise for the city manager. And I believe our city manager also has an item.
I would like to add, as we get closer to the end of the meeting, a little conversation with the board regarding the Chief of Police position and the process for pursuing our new Chief of Police.
Excellent. And, and we will, um, so there are those three items, and Commissioner Fields will lead the discussion on the city manager's pay as Chair of the Personnel Committee when we get to that part. So we have adding presentation to Ginny Curran, manager's pay, and discussion about hiring of the police chief. Are there any other that are proposed? Are there any other comments about or adjustments to the agenda that anyone would like to make? And what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tovey to accept the agenda with those changes. Any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The agenda stands adopted with those three additions. Thank you. In order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency in governance, our board has approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those, that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with respect to any matters before the board tonight. And if any of you do know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time. No conflicts, let the record so note. And with that, I will invite, uh, we have the presentation for the July Yard of the Month, and it is to Gail and Bill Emerson of 512 Harris Street. Are you here? Yes, wonderful. We're gonna go in front of the seal there. How do you do? Nice to see you. So, the Emerson's are new, fairly new dogs, have been in Oxford about five years, moved it down a corner lot on Harris Street, and peaceful, beautiful, idyllic. And as I went by to see the yard, Bill explained to me that he goes to heavy labor because Gail is the design queen behind this perfect yard and perfect porch with everything matching. I could take a lot of lessons. Very, very beautiful. So, uh, with that, we are proud to award you this month's Yard of the Month, and in recognition of your valuable contribution towards the beauty of our community presented this 13th day of July, and I would ask you, we're gonna have you hold that and get a picture, and I'd ask everybody to give her a round of applause. And we also have for you this book, um, 200th Anniversary for the City of Oxford, as well as a license plate to put on the front of your car that says Oxford, North Carolina, green and clean. And so it goes to you and your, oh, good, perfect. And your name will be entered into a drawing along with everybody else's at the end of the six-month season for downtown dollars to be spent in downtown Oxford. And so I would like to ask of you, are there any particular points of pride that you have that you want to tell us about?
Well, she's, she's modest, so I'll tell you. When we were in Durham, it was a project of love. Every area within the yard became an opportunity for the garden. And she's got the green thumb, and she's got the passion, and she's got the eye for layering a garden in such a way that everything blooms all throughout the season. So from, you know, February, as soon as we start getting warm all the way until late in October, you'll have blooms all throughout the yard. So she's taken, and since we moved up here, we couldn't get the semi truck to bring all the plants. Then she wanted to from Durham, so she's had to start over a little bit. And now she's, we're five years into the plan to get things going in the yard. And for those of you that do garden and do labor in your yards, it is a, a lifetime passion. It's not something you just do one time and then walk away from it. It's something that every year, whenever the new plants come out, it blows, or she's shopping nurseries in a 50-mile radius, then she's always looking for that next plant that could fit right here and augment the, uh, the rest of the garden. So, okay, I'll stop embarrassing you.
Well, clearly, clearly, we have a better understanding of how great this yard is, and now we know, so a lot of times what happens with Guards of the Month is they have this protective season, and then they might have waned. So now you all know that you can cruise out by 512 Harris Street, hop through the end of October, and you're bound to see something looking for itself. So, let's give them all, vote another round of applause. Take care. Okay, and next, I go back around, and we invite former Commissioner Al Woodliffe to give a presentation on the airport authority.
My report's not gonna last that long. No, it's, uh, they have a nice yard, you need to go by and look. Uh, the airport, like everything else, has been shut down quite a bit by the, the virus, and as of the first of the year, things have gotten a little bit back to normal. As of the end of the month, um, of June, uh, the increase in, in flights from 2019 to June of 2021 were up 49%. One of the things that is coming up, and I don't know if this is on the city calendar, on, um, in August, August 14th, the EAA Youth Eagles will have an event at the airport, and this is for kids aged, uh, ages eight to 17. And anybody that wants to go out and learn about flying, they'll be, they'll take them around, they'll take them up on a free flying. Also, they're working with Vance Granville Community College to do ground school, and then, uh, they would go to the airport to take their flight training. There are two flying schools available at Henderson, Oxford now, and we have a glider school, if anybody wants to go up in a glider, uh, we've got that to offer. Uh, the new management team is made up of a family, which has done a great job. The, uh, I don't think, have any of you all received any complaints lately, like we used to? I don't, I don't think so. Everything's great out there. Uh, we applied for a grant and got it, and, um, now the pilots and some of the people that don't have anyone to pick them up, uh, they, we have a new Chevrolet from Boyd and Henderson, and we got rid of the 1997 Lincoln Continental that the springs, it was riding a little low, so, uh, the pilots started complaining. Uh, we have a lot of people that since, and you've heard this on TV, uh, about the commercial flights, we have a lot of people that fly in here at Oxford and are taking treatments at Duke and at Over Chapel Hill. Some come in as many times as three times a week. And, uh, we have, uh, one of our industrialists that is on one of those programs, I'm sad to say, and he, uh, matter of fact, he's here about every other day for treatment. Um, in the future, uh, we've got a lot of things planned, a lot of things planned, we're in a planning stage for the next 12 months. Um, the state and the federal government, uh, they, they want to build a new terminal. We have two new, um, hangars that were full-time, they were built. We got rid of a lot of the older planes that people were just using the hangars to store it, and when it went up on the rate, uh, they, they weren't even flyable, most of them were sold for scrap. We have, uh, the runway is, uh, is gonna be repaved, but it, uh, it's in good condition. The taxiway, and the way the new airplanes are, the taxiway was so close to the runway, we had to take off to some of the sections of the older hangars because the wings would touch. When one would land, the other one was fixing to take off, the wings would scrub one another, so we, we did that. Uh, also, uh, something that we were hoping for, that we have not heard back from after we got the price from the city on how much it would cost to run a water line from Salem Road to the airport. Uh, Duke University was gonna build a heliport there and house six helicopters, uh, but they, they have not been back. We understand that it will be in Granville County, if it's not at the airport, it will be in Granville County, but we were hoping it would be at the, uh, at the airport where we could share in the tax value, because I think there were gonna be about $35 million worth of aircraft there. Henderson has one that's housed at Mariah Param now for Chapel Hill, and Durham still houses theirs over Duke and comes here. We sell quite a bit of fuel to them as well as the, uh, the Army. And, um, again, people, uh, are going to Sanford and to, to Oxford. Raleigh Durham is doing away with general aviation, as I told you before, and as you heard on TV, I think they got another new airline over there. But, uh, we've got a long waiting list, uh, we're trying to get people to, um, build hangars for lease, leasing purposes. Uh, you build a hangar at George for 15 years, you collect the rent, we collect the taxes and sell the fuel, and then in 15 years, it goes back to us. Our operating budget this year, and Hawk, you should be getting this very soon, uh, is gonna be 1,712,885 dollars, of which, um, the federal and state government supplies 1,541,000, and the local government, and what we make out there makes up 171,269 dollars. So, uh, things are looking up out there, I invite you to go out there. If you go out on Saturday and Sunday, a pilot's like, somebody with a fast car, they'll always want to take you up and fly you around. Any questions?
When you spoke about the increase from one June to another going up 49%, was that June 19 to June 20?
It was, it was.
Okay, that's what I thought, thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Board members, commissioners for, Mr. Woodliffe?
Yeah, I have a question. I, I recall us having a discussion at an earlier time, um, relative to us losing some business at the airport because the runway wasn't long enough for certain planes to come in, in particular, when they were like transporting folks to go to Butler, some of the prisons, and I was wondering, has there been a change to that?
Yes, um, I'm, I'm, I don't have any notes, so I'm glad you brought that up. We had a, an, uh, a mishap at the airport about four years ago. It was on a rainy night, and the, uh, pilot was not aware of the length of the runway, and it went off about two foot, and we had somebody that had been a pilot and had been on a, a board, and, uh, he made a phone call, which the situation could have been corrected with a tractor, but it ended up keeping the plane there for almost a month. So the people that owned the, uh, the service, they stopped coming, and they still have not started back. Uh, we have been in touch with the warden at, uh, Butler, uh, Richard Burr has been contacted, uh, Mr. Butterfield, and, uh, several other people. We think we're gonna be able to get them back, uh, since the new correctional facility here, we, we're arguing that it's better to pick them up there than to haul them back to Person County. But right now, they're going to Person County. Uh, in fact, uh, our air, airstrip out there now would take a DC-9. Uh, it's, it's a mile and four tenths long, so it's, the length is no problem, and, um, if we could house them, the tarmac is full, they're tied down, we don't have anywhere to put anything. So if anybody wants to invest in a hangar, we'd be happy to have you to come out there and build one. But, uh, go out there and visit it, and, and I would say, as I, as the gentleman from the county is gonna be telling them, uh, Oxford and Granville County get the benefit out of that. Henderson and Vance County get very little, but they contribute just like you do. But I think, uh, possibly a sign or something, because the pilots, when they leave, they usually come to Oxford to eat and walk around and look around. So, uh, maybe a small sign, the state has put up, uh, a nice sign for us that says "Welcome to North Carolina," because we do get a lot of out-of-state with these industries, a lot from Pennsylvania in particular. And, uh, so, if you hadn't been out there-
Same, a small sign directing people to downtown Oxford that's placed out at the airport, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, yes.
A little bit along the lines of what they've done out at the Oxford Park Ball Field?
That's right, that's exactly right.
Okay.
And, and, you know, the, the county is, is gonna be asked to do the same thing by, by their representative at, at their meeting. Uh, Henderson shows no interest because they said, nobody goes that way anyway, so... But it is a, uh, in the, in the plans, uh, and the government, as, as I talked about the budget, you see that the federal government and the state government puts quite a bit of money in that place, quite a bit. So, uh, go out there and, uh, catch a free ride some weekend, and I do appreciate you all keeping me on the board out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from members of the board? Okay, thank you, Mr. Woodliffe. And with that, I would like to invite Ginny Curran to come forward, so the day is.
So, all of you know that Ginny was our intrepid Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce for 24 years until December, what date, the day of December, well, the end of the year, the end of the year. Um, and then there was this plan that we were gonna, they were gonna do a party for her, and then there was this virus that got in the way of doing a party, and the party was gonna be postponed, and we had gathered up various city paraphernalia to at least be able to express our appreciation, and, um, it never happened. And so now that we're meeting in person again, we just thought it was important to celebrate someone who has worked hard, obviously, for the county at large, but a lot of what she has done has impacted directly the City of Oxford. The Live After Five events, um, innumerable After Five, Business After Hours events in various Oxford businesses, and the early morning events, what do you call those? This is before hours? Yeah, those were tough for me. Ginny clearly operates on a different schedule than I do, but she was- Yeah. And there was so many things going on all the time because of her work, and it just seemed that we had forgotten of it, uh, in some small way. So, we have a little certificate for, that says, "The City of Oxford celebrates Ginny Dickerson Curran for 24 years of dedicated service to the business and overall community of the City of Oxford and Granville County by creating unceasing opportunities for promotion, engagement, and connection to others and one another. Presented this the 13th day of July 2021 by the City of Oxford Mayor and Board of Commissioners." And I want you all, please, to give Ginny a huge hand.
She named all those meetings, and I have to say, thanks to the mayors and the city managers and the executive staff, and Ellen's been on the board, Jackie did the fundraising, and some of the early meetings, and she liked it probably less than I did, the early meetings. Um, we couldn't have done this without the support of this council, and Oxford has been exceptional, and I appreciate that. Um, there have been 31 Alive After Five's in that park lot. There you go. The first year was one, and then we moved to two a year in Oxford. Um, and the reason I think we have such good response is because it's in the same location. This is the 17th year minus a year for COVID, of course, um, so I have to thank everybody. I hope my husband Danny did not influence all this. Thanks too much. But I do appreciate that. I know that these department heads, that control, all of you all, will be so glad not to see myself and come up on your phone, and here she's calling about something about Alive After Five. Poor Roger, he was like, "Ms. Ginny, are you sure we need to, to close Oxford Park a lot early?" Well, yeah, we did, and y'all were so cooperative, everybody. Uh, thank you so much.
Well, nobody realizes how constant and unending these events, the following up on the details, so we appreciate you so much, but we're really happy for you, we're gonna really miss you, but we're really happy for you that you get to enjoy sleeping in and doing whatever you want during the day, so please, let's give her another one. And this is for you.
Oh, thank you.
Absolutely. And is there anybody else on the board that wants to make a comment?
Keep quiet, Jenny.
It's been a pleasure to work with you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Okay, and with that, we'll move forward to the public comment portion of our agenda, where people can come forward to speak on agenda as well as non-agenda items, and, uh, time will be limited to five minutes per person, and first, we invite Debbie Ramsey to come forward, uh, 107 Meadow Heights, Oxford, to tell us what you, and please state your name again for the record, and address, and the purpose for your speaking tonight.
Hello, my name is Debbie Ramsey, 107 Meadow Heights, Oxford, and I'm mainly speaking to the camera there and hoping that Oxford citizens will take a look. My, the heading on this is, "Is Anybody Looking?", and so it's to the city. Um, it's election time again for the Oxford City Board of Commissioners and Mayor. My message today is to the younger residents who plan on calling Oxford their home and raising their families here. If Oxford succeeds in the future, younger, smarter people who have an interest personally or financially in Oxford have to step up and run for office. Oxford will not grow and thrive or possibly survive without a new vision, new ideas, and new faces. Oxford may eventually become only a spot in the road to get to I-85 and Highway 15. Oxford currently has many obstacles standing in the way of success. The current board and the failures of city boards over the past two decades to meet the most basic needs of this city, which is safe drinking water. According to city records, that failure of the board result, of the boards resulting in a projected cost of $100 million over the next 10 years to fix the problem. Residents will soon see increased water bills, will a tax increase be required to pay for this costly mistake? This current board, including those whose term will expire, had paid large amounts of taxpayer money for companies to come to Oxford and reimagine what downtown Oxford should look like to grow the business district. should look like to grow the business district. What did Oxford get out of the taxpayer-funded ideas in the last five years? Around about. While driving downtown, I see crumbling facades, empty storefronts, and potential safety hazards dead smack in the middle of town. The building currently housing the radio station had crumbling bricks, and I still saw them as I drove past there tonight, sitting precariously on the edge of the roof for weeks. Not only was it unsightly in the middle of town, but dangerous to citizens on the sidewalk below. The building beside 101 has been abandoned for years with boxes stacked against the front door. Hopefully, a firewall exists between 101's grill and the abandoned building. What existing city ordinances protect citizens and other property owners from such blight and hazards? The new board needs to be courageous and adopt and enforce new building ordinances in the building district. I believe that Oxford citizens must take a look at the big picture. Oxford is currently the county seat. That fact itself brings people into the business district as well as employees who work in county buildings, and it offers a boost to the economy, but it is minimal. Now to the big picture that Oxford needs to look at. The county built the multimillion-dollar law enforcement complex, and there is now an abandoned sheriff's office and jail. County offices, except for the tax department, were relocated to a renovated rental property not owned by the city across from City Hall. Some county offices remain in the unsightly, unmaintained red building beside courthouse. What's the county's plan for the county? Is there a commissioner liaison between these two boards? Will the next program for the county become lack of space and security at the courthouse? Will the courthouse become a museum? If so, where will the new courthouse and its employees be housed? Can a county seat be moved to a bustling, rapidly growing part of the county, such as the Southern Inn? It's all just food for thought, and I'm not spreading rumors. But the question, the food for thought is, Oxford needs to wake up and step up.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Ramsey. And with that, I would invite Joan Robertson to come forward, and please state your name and your address and your purpose for speaking tonight.
Okay, thank you. My name is Joan Robertson. I live at the pub 02, North Country Club Drive in Oxford. I'm here tonight to talk about the core values that this board generally reads every meeting. And I didn't hear them tonight, but you will hear them now. There was an incident that occurred at the last agenda meeting where there was a threat to ban citizens from the meetings of the City of Oxford. And it's not only an inappropriate thing to do, but it's also an illegal thing to do. As stated in the North Carolina General Statute, an official meeting, all official meetings of the public bodies are open to the public, and any person is entitled to attend such a meeting. According to Code's Cannons of North Carolina Local Government Law Blog, North Carolina state law requires city councils to provide at least one public comment, period, per month at a regular meeting. The City of Oxford Charter, Article 2, Section 10, in part says, "This board has the power to make ordinances, rules, regulations, provided such are not inconsistent with the law of the land." The First Amendment of the United States Constitution, which applies to federal, state, and local governments, states in part, "Congress shall make no law abridging freedom of speech." Research reveals that this was put into place to prevent government from becoming tyrannical when being criticized by citizens. In other words, all citizens have a right to attend public meetings and to speak if they choose. In fact, one of your core values says you value and commit to model open and transparent communication. How can this be true if you are talking of banning people from coming to meetings if you don't like what they have to say? When you're not telling the truth to citizens, then you're not being honest, another core value that you say you value and commit to model. One of you stated on three occasions that Oxford needs a pool for all children. Every one of you on this board allowed this statement to go unchecked, all three times that it was mentioned. As I have used our city pool and seen all kinds of people there, I actually relayed in a variety of ways that we already have a pool for all children, all three times. But since not one of you defended the City of Oxford against this blatant discrimination of our citizens, perhaps I'm the one not properly informed. So now I ask these questions. Which children aren't allowed to use our city pool? Why would this board allow such a thing to happen? Is the pool we have for all? Or have all of you failed to make sure that our ordinances, rules, and regulations prevent such discrimination? Cost-effective and quality service for our community, I assume that means all of our community, is another of your core values. At last week's agenda meeting, the same commissioner insisted that we need a pool for all children, rather than, the same commissioner who had insisted that we need a pool for all children, rather than correct his error, chose to double down in his outrage, indicating I had screamed at him. That was yet another of his untruths. However, when one is being exposed to wrongdoing, I can understand how calling out this behavior would seem like yelling. If that was the perception, it was not intended. I do have a well-trained teacher voice that I use when needed. Perhaps his accusation was an attempt to divert blame and distract from the previous misinformation he had given the public. However, public attacks on citizens fall short of the core value of treating everyone with dignity, courtesy, and respect. I've been told commissioners are not required or expected to respond to public comment. Most frequently, they say nothing, but always have the opportunity to reply. What then gives them the privilege to respond at the end of a meeting or at a different meeting without affording the speaker the same courtesy of a time to reply? The system only works to protect them, not to allow citizens equal time for response. Not surprising that few attend meetings or sign up to speak. You may say, you say in another core value, can I finish?
Yes.
You, thank you, Jackie. You say in another core value that you value and commit to model responsibility for your decisions and actions. If indeed you held yourselves and your colleagues accountable, would you allow emotions to enter into the discussion of a business of this board? Would you not correct one of your colleagues when they misspeak? Would you allow a commissioner to vent feelings when important business of the city is waiting? If you're not honest in exhibiting integrity, another core value, you should be held accountable. Expect that someone will call you out for bad behavior, and expect that you will deserve it. If this board attempts to silence or ban any taxpayer of this city, be assured that you're going against the law of this land according to the U.S. Constitution. Also be assured that many citizens who choose to speak have valid documentation in hand before doing so. I would certainly not present without evidence, as I have witnessed the reactions of some of you who think you are beyond criticism. You have a responsibility to make decisions in the best interest of all citizens in this community. If you don't take that seriously, get used to the fact that you might not like what people have to say, and that they still have a right to say it. It is the law of our land.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robertson. We appreciate your coming forward. I would like to make two comments. One of them is related to allowing commissioners to speak and not having dialogue with citizens. The purpose for public comment, that time is set aside at every regular board meeting precisely to allow citizens, stakeholders, to come forward and speak. The time at the end of the board meeting, when all of the business of the meeting has already been conducted, is that time when I allow each commissioner to say what is ever on their mind. And we are, we usually just allow each commissioner to say what's ever on the mind. Sometimes it leads to further business, but very often, we just go one by one, what's on your mind? And oftentimes, in this one case, we were headed into a closed session, so we needed to move forward to the rest of the business. That's my one comment there. With respect to the earlier comment by Ms. Ramsey about poor decision-making leading in a failed water system, I would like to comment directly on that because there are a lot of people that have a lot of questions about all of the work that's been done in downtown Oxford. We, it is true that we are doing a lot of work to make up for work that could have been done earlier. But we have planned carefully and thoughtfully over the past four and a half years to set our water rates so that they could accommodate this incredibly important work that we are doing. We started with old yellowed maps and have moved to having everything mapped on GIS and the condition, and capital improvement plans and priorities in terms of assessing the condition of all the water and the sewer work. And due to the excellent, excellent work of our engineering department, we have obtained $50 million in funding in the past, I would say, not quite four years. Over 10 of that is grant dollars. The combination of zero-interest loans and the $10 million in grant funding is saving our water customers over $5 million in interest, depending on how it's going to end up. So the work that we are doing there is extremely important. The quality of our water is good. We are very proud of the water that comes out of the Car Lake Regional Water System, and very proud of the work that we're doing now, which has also been carefully coordinated with NC DOT so that we can get our roads dug up and the pipes, new pipes installed before NC DOT comes and repaves. So I just think it's important for people to understand that, yeah, certainly in my mind, the fact that Oxford has stepped forward to prevent Oxford becoming Flint, Michigan, and the issues that they've had up there, that we are showing the rest of the world that looks at Oxford as a prospective place to invest, that we are investing in our own community, that we are taking care of the issues that we have here so that we can create a solid system for the next generation. And the work that we have done has been based on the 2017 Water and Wastewater Master Plan that was created by the state. We are considered a poster child for implementing the recommendations that came out of the state. And I just think we have an awful lot to be proud of with respect to the work that we've done there. So we do invite comments, and you are absolutely right, Ms. Robertson, that we have to be able to hear the good and the bad, but I thought it was important to set the record straight with respect to the work that we are doing in our utility department.
To set the record straight, if I could say, I did not say what's happened since Mr. Gordon has arrived. I alluded to decades, decades.
Okay.
What's going on there? Because I think this happened in there was wonderful.
Okay. Well, I think it's important that the people that are up here and the staff that is employed by the city are the ones that are doing the work that needs to be done to make sure that Oxford is a worthy place of investment with respect to utilities. So thank you. Thank you very much. And with that, we will move forward. We appreciate your coming forward and using the public period comment time. With that, we will move forward to a public hearing to receive citizen input regarding the wastewater allocation agreement for Hatcher Creek. Per North Carolina General Statute 160D-601A, a legislative hearing must be held before adopting, amending, or repealing any ordinance or development regulation. And so with that, we have, board members have the information about the wastewater agreement, water and wastewater agreement in attachment, let's see, 4B. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I apologize for the hesitation. And with that, actually, I think I'm going to read the descriptor before we open the public hearing. So the developer proposes to develop on the property a mixed-use planned unit development of residential and commercial use to be named Hatcher Creek. The proposed plan for Hatcher Creek includes the following sections and uses. The Groves, 288 apartment units; the Towns, 108 townhome units; the Village, 30 single-family units; and the Landing, which is planned for future commercial use. The developer desires to secure, and the city desires to provide sewer allocation for the development of Hatcher Creek pursuant to the terms of this agreement. And as mentioned, you have your support information and the agreement in attachment 4B. With that, I declare the public hearing open. And I invite, is there anybody in our section here to our right that would like to come forward and speak on this issue? And please state your name and address for the record. Mr. McCoy.
I'm Eddie McCoy, 408 Kingsborough Street. I'm in favor of this project because we need the revenues in the city, the people that are moving in, they'd be bringing money, and they'd be spending money in our city. And this is part of the growth. Raleigh and Durham, they're running out of space, and I think it'll be a good opportunity for this county to take advantage of it. Because you see, this morning, Raleigh and Durham ranked number two in the country for people, for the move. If they rank number two in the country, what you think will happen to Oxford? We will get, we will get some of the revenues, and it'd be to our advantage, is not to turn this down, take advantage of it. Because they have to live here, they have to, they have to spend money here, they go right by the mall, Walmart, they're going to spend some money there. So we need to take advantage of it, and that way, we can take their revenues, and maybe we can get that swimming pool for everybody. I hope the developer put that in, in the plan too, to support the public swimming pool.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCoy. Is there anybody else in this section to my right that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Is there anyone in the section to our, the center section that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Is there anyone in the section to our left that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Last call. Would anyone, regardless of where you were speaking, like to come forward and speak on this issue? Okay. There being no signal, I declare the public hearing closed. And we move forward to consider adopting the proposed wastewater allocation agreement for Hatcher Creek with your, the agreement in attachment 4B. You have heard that this will consist of 288 apartment units, 108 townhome units, 30 single-family units, and a future commercial area. And proving this agreement will enable the developer to proceed directly with work on this project. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The motion carries. Thank you so much. We appreciate you all for coming tonight, and we appreciate your faith and investment in the City of Oxford, and look forward to supporting you in any way that we can.
Thank you all. We can keep you in the mood.
Great. Thank you. Okay. We move forward to item five, city business. Consider accepting Attorney Gerald Kornus of Hicks Coinus Law for legal representation for the Oxford Zoning Board of Adjustment. Attorney Willie Darby resigned from this position due to scheduling conflicts on June 8, 2021. Attorney Coinus is currently serving- Attorney Coinis is currently serving as the zoning board, zoning board of adjustment attorney for the town of Buckner and Granville County. Attorney Coinis will receive a flat rate of 200 per month for the following services: meeting preparation, attending the meetings, and post-meeting items needed such as drafting orders. Services not included in the above flat rate will be billed at $170 per hour. These services include, but are not limited to, reviewing and updating the rules of procedure, advising as to other changes that may be needed to comply with Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes, and services rendered for litigation, including any appeals of decisions of the Board of Adjustment. And you can see information there too in attachment 5A in the staff report. So, recommended action, of course, is that staff recommends appointing Attorney Gerald Coinis as legal counsel to the zoning board of adjustment. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Oh, that was like, I think that was a triple motion, but certainly between Commissioner Bridges and Commissioner Toby. And is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item B. Consider adopting a budget amendment for the joint resurfacing project between the city of Oxford and NC DOT. The city entered into an agreement with NC DOT to do a joint resurfacing project and they required payment of our portion of the project in advance. The city used the Powell Bill funds to cover a portion of the payment and obtained a loan to cover the additional amount needed. The proposed amendment would be proceeds from the BB&amp;T loan 018-391010-99 into the Powell Bill Street Resurfacing, which is line item 018-4513-6620. The payment of NC DOT was based on the DOT engineer's estimate for the project. It is possible this amount could change when the actual resurfacing is completed. Excuse me. And you have support information in attachment 5B. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Okay, I'm just writing myself a note. And then, we go to item C, which is to consider in approving the installation of temporary public art in downtown Oxford. The DOE-DC Design Committee and the Public Art Committee request the approval of temporary public art installations for a period of 12 months in downtown Oxford. The DOE-DC and the city of Oxford, as recommended in the downtown master plan adopted in 2016, have researched and reviewed various options for public art used in other communities and recommend that temporary rented art is the best solution at this time. The purpose: To use temporary art installation as a catalyst for discussion with the community regarding the design and art types for Oxford to consider for permanent installation in the future. The goal: The Public Art Committee would like to create an art walk with pre-selected and purposed site locations. The art walk would be promoted as a destination to visit the sculpted art in Oxford. Cost: Each piece of sculpted art will cost $1,000 to $1,500 per piece for the 12-month rental period to come from the downtown development budget in the economic development line item. That's already been approved in the budget. And the commitment: The city of Oxford will enter into a rental lease agreement with one artist, Adam Walls. Based on Public Works Director Steven Blasko's experience with this artist, the committee requests a minimum of five pieces to create this art walk in downtown Oxford. The city will provide labor and supplies needed for the installation of art. And you see, there is a list and in your attachment 5C, there are pictures of the items listed and a map showing potential locations for all of the art. And the recommended action, of course, is that staff recommends approving the installation of temporary art for an art walk in the, in the purposed site locations. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Okay, that was a concomitant motion from Commissioners Toby and Fields. Is there any discussion on this item?
Just have a question.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm excited about this art coming to our city, but I wondered whether or not there were plans for, I don't know, schoolchildren or other young people having scheduled tours to go look at this art? Or does it just sit there and anybody that wants to go look at it can look at it?
That's an excellent question. I would expect, certainly at this point, I think it's safe to say the goal is to get it installed. But I think that is, I was on the phone for another event that the city is working on with some folks, with Jennifer Cufalo, who's with the Granville Ed Foundation. And there is also the Oxford Arts Center or Center for the Arts. And I always get confused which is which. I don't know, Mr. Zhang, can you, one of them is a nonprofit.
Oxford Center for the Arts.
Oxford Center for the Arts, which is focused, so I think there could be certainly plenty of opportunity to engage with Granville County schools and especially like Cradle, which is so nearby to, for teachers or whatever, to schedule something like that. Yep.
Allow me to make a comment.
Yep.
So, I want to make one comment, I want to give you one update based on what you saw. So, representing the DOE-DC on this item in particular, so we're obviously speaking out in support of this, we've worked closely with the city, these committees that have met are really committees out of the DOE-DC in partnership with the city and what Steven and I have talked about in terms of how to get these things put on the ground. So, what has been mapped out is really a sort of a shrink down of a larger conversation about where all the opportunities for public art are in downtown Oxford. And I did make a presentation to the county board last Tuesday night because two of these locations that are sort of prime belong to them. When it's a courthouse square is theirs and the library is theirs. So, they were, we had asked them for the opportunity to work with them to identify art and locations and what they did instead was actually approve us to move forward. They were excited about the two locations that were proposed. So, those became, we really hope so to, those are going to be probably one of the, two of the first ones that we, that we attach to. What DOE-DC wants to do with this, obviously, this is a, the city is responsible for installation and the contracts are going to go through the city. DOE-DC really wants to work to address one of its priorities, which was public art, not really defined in terms of what that would be, but now, obviously, we're looking at these standing sculptural pieces, but how to really take those and incorporate them into how citizens interact with them. So, whether that be around promotions directly tied to downtown business or teaming up with folks like Jennifer who's on DOE-DC to find ways to engage students. But really, that idea, especially where Steven came from, the idea that this could start with a handful of pieces to create an art walk and then over time, I'm not sure how many pieces you ended up with at Clayton, but.
Twelve.
Twelve of them, standing at a time. So, these are pieces that could rotate over time. Some of them will be interactive in terms of, you can climb on them, you can sit on them, some will make noise, some will move. So, they'll be interesting to people in different ways. So, we hope that the DOE-DC can help really drive a discussion about what comes next, what are the next areas, what are the next sort of ways that we want to interact with the public. So, hopefully, we can take on that role and we appreciate your consideration on this. We think it's a great idea.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zhang. And for those of you that may not know, Pierre Zhang is the current, is it president?
Sorry.
President of the DOE-DC Board. So, that's, that's his knowledge and commitment that he brings to the discussion. And I believe also there is intent with these first items coming from, from one artist that in the course of the next year, there can be work to develop a plan for how to throw out a call for additional art and a process for selecting art so that we open up to artists from a variety of locations, including hopefully locally. So, I, that gave you more of an answer, I think, than you expected, but, but do you have any follow-up questions?
Well, you know, I would just simply say, you know, we're, you know, it's wonderful we're having this art come in and, of course, we're paying some money for the rental of it. But I, I'm just hoping that it's useful to the public and, and you know, and if, and if the artist and/or another person that sort of knows a little bit about the art can explain what it's trying to say, because, you know, there were, there are a couple of pieces, I'm looking at it and, you know, I'm not really sure what it means and what it's trying to say. And it would be great, you know, for example, this piece, you know, it's pretty, but I have no clue, you know, as to what it's.
It's just different things to different people. That's the, that's the good thing about.
Well, but I think it's probably a specific thing to the artist.
Well, yeah, probably.
Yeah.
I believe they'll have QR codes on them, correct?
Yeah, so one of the things that doesn't show up well in these pictures because of where these are, some are actually at his studio and some of these are installed at our locations. But our vision for this was that there would be a panel standing directly in front of the piece that really describes where it came from, what the artist's version of the story is for it, probably has a QR code on it, will somehow tie into the art walk itself, directing folks on where sort of the next stop's are. Because if you look at the layout, this one's relatively small. You probably still won't identify it standing there where the next one is, but as it grows, we'll want to make sure there's sort of a map there. So, yeah, that, that was the goal, is to make sure that people have a story. But to Commissioner Toby's point, we still want to leave some room for people to envision in their own minds what this art means.
Excellent. So, great. Any further comments from any members of the board? I think this is the most awesome thing. I am just excited to death to get public art in downtown Oxford. I really am just thrilled. And I want to thank Mary Yount for her work on this and Steven Blasko, who so new on the job, had exactly the right set of skills and knowledge to be able to bring this forward much more quickly than we would have done on our own. So, I just think it's really exciting. And if there are no other comments, I will call for the vote. All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That vote carries unanimously. Thank you so very much to everyone involved with this. And last item, we have a, item six, a discussion item regarding the tethering of animals in the city of Oxford. And Commissioner Toby has researched the ordinances of several counties and municipalities and has brought the board an example of an ordinance that he believes will suit Oxford. It is, we discussed it last week at the agenda meeting, and it is attached in, attachment 6A, but the city of Oxford has already prepared and at our place, I believe, has taken the wording from Commissioner Toby's proposal and drafted it into very specifically the language that we would use if we were to adopt it as our own ordinance. So, board members, would you like to be able to take a moment to look through what is at your place and look at the proposed ordinance that Commissioner Toby put in there? And then, I will turn it over to Commissioner Toby if we give everybody just a minute to look at this.
Fair enough. Thank you.
In one breath, we're, it seems that we.
Commissioner Gilreath, can I let Commissioner Toby first present and then you jump in with your question? Is that okay? Are we, are we ready or people have? Okay, then Commissioner Toby.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank our city attorney, Tom. We worked together on this and with the city manager. So, we, what we've done is taken wording from other municipalities, successful, obviously, tethering ordinances. It's something that has been needed for a long time, I believe, not just in Oxford, but I mean, we can only control what goes on in Oxford. Especially recently with the extreme weather season having, when you see dogs tied out in, in this, what can I say? I mean, extreme, extreme heat with little water, dirty water, all food. And so, this, this ordinance is really needed and again, so I want to thank Tom and the city manager for following up with it for me. If you look through the ordinance or the proposed ordinance where it says extreme weathers, I think that goes, is better than I imagined, you know, where it says 80 degrees or in the summer and 40 degrees, anything below 40 degrees in the winter. So, if you've ever seen animals stuck out there in, with no shade or very little shade in extreme temperatures, you know what they're going through. They're suffering. And it's about time that it's stopped. So, I'm glad about that. I'm glad about the, within the proposed ordinance, about the shelter, that it has to be four inches off the ground, it has to be fresh straw or hay or a blanket or something cleaned regularly. And the time limit on the tethering as well, that's the most important thing. You can tether a dog, but there is a time limit of three hours in any 24 hours. And hopefully, I don't think the public have seen this yet, have they? It will be made public hopefully very soon if, I don't see why it couldn't be passed tonight, really. I think we could sign it tonight and have it in effect from the 1st of August. So, if there's anybody's got any questions about it, then I'll be more than happy.
So, then I will defer to Commissioner Gilreath, who.
Don't give me a hard time now.
No problem. Well, my, my question merely. My question is regarding the acceptable tethering devices. I'm just concerned that, that, that we're identifying a way to do it properly.
There is.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there is a way to do it properly in a way.
So, tethering is not the issue, is how people do it?
Well, tethering, what people are doing is they're tethering their dogs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year. And this stops that. This, there is a time limit on how long a dog can be tethered outside.
Okay, well, it really said, well, what I got from that last part there was 10 feet.
If you look at this, three hours in any 24. The tethering itself, the tethering device itself must be at least, that's the acceptable within the time limits.
Okay, so then you have to apply all that other stuff to it.
Yes, absolutely.
Acceptable tethering.
Tethering devices, yeah. It has to be acceptable when a dog is tethered out for that maximum three-hour period.
My question would be, who and how would we monitor the three hours? You know, I mean.
It's like.
Anybody, you know, people will tell you anything and, you know, the police officer knock on the door and say, John, how long has your dog, excuse me, how long has your dog been out? Your dog really could have been out for six hours and you can say two hours. So, how would we, how would that be monitored?
This is, this is the one problem and you've got to rely on.
The honor system?
On a system with the neighbors have reported it or whether what you've seen. Not so much the honor system because people that do that sort of thing are not going to be honest with you.
Dirty water.
So, so it's got to be monitored by other people that report it. No one's going to go around looking for these dogs. It's going to be done on the basis of someone's reported it and you go and check. Now, if you go around at 10 o'clock in the morning and you drive past and you see this dog tethered out there and you go around that. and you go around at one o'clock in the afternoon and that dog is still tethered there, you've got a good idea that dog's been tethered for three hours. So use common sense with that one pack and, um, rely on witnesses if necessary. And we have to educate the public first.
I just feel that's going to be a question that the public's going to bring to us, who, you know.
It might be.
It's my impression that, um, what this does is on the occasions when somebody has noticed an, an animal that has been, um, or a dog that is clearly being tethered because they see it over and over and over again, there's been no recourse because there's no enforceable ordinance, unless there's a clear state of animal abuse. And so when they reached out to us and they reach out to animal control without clear abuse, there's nothing that anybody can do. So the way that I'm looking at this is that this ordinance, um, now, we have an ordinance on, would have an ordinance if the board so chooses, that if somebody notices, they complain and then some monitoring could take place.
Oh, I'm in favor.
I wish a key aspect of this also, as I mentioned a moment ago, again, is the education phase of it.
That's right.
We have something here that's a basis of what action we may need to take. Above anything else, the public should be made aware of this and know what's going to happen.
Great point.
Well, that's why I suggested if we could sign it, make it from the first of August, you've got time to, to put it in the newspaper, let people know. But no one's suggesting that the minute you see a dog on a tether, you know it's on a tether. You're immediately going to come, come down on the ordinance. You've got to educate the person whose dog it is first. If they haven't been educated then, then it's time for enforcement.
Mr. Thornton, would you say that we need a period of education before the ordinance becomes active? So maybe space it out? What are, what are your thoughts there?
Well, I certainly think it would be appropriate that, um, we'd be given sufficient time to get that information out via every means that we have available to us. You know, you don't want that to be somebody's first line of defense is going, well, I didn't that.
Right.
You're going to get that anyway.
Yeah.
But I think it is appropriate for us to take the opportunity to get that information out so that the city can respond appropriately to that and say, we've done this, you know, and all these media and all these forums and, you know, now we're here at your doorstep informing you personally. I, I'm an advocate of exactly what Commissioner Toby is, is talking about, that, um, specific violations, unless they are viewed to be life threatening for the animal, immediately life threatening, that we try to work with those people, especially those in certain circumstances that, um, need a little bit of assistance, need a little bit of time to get that issue straightened out. But, um, you know, the other part of it is, number one is common sense application, just like, uh, a number of other ordinances that we have on the books. And our code enforcement officer and, uh, police department and others do a good job with that and they understand that. But, um, another part is just, you know, good public education and getting the public to understand the reason for this. Because there's a lot of different situations out there as to why dogs wind up like this. But what you're talking about is just simply adding another tool to our toolbox. That, that's really what that is. It's adding another tool to our toolbox. I'm sure our four-legged friends will greatly appreciate, uh, having that for us to be able to go out there and hopefully remediate some of these situations where these animals are suffering. I mean, it's not our objective to punish people. It is not. Our objective is to educate and through that education to gain compliance. And if it gets to where the penal portion is necessary and required, we would now have the tool to do that. But yes, I do agree that we do need a little bit of time to get that information out. And if this board chooses to adopt this tonight, uh, that education would start tomorrow.
But how would you think as Mr. Toby proposed, Commissioner Toby proposed August first? Or do you think kind of a longer run-in period would be needed?
I don't know that it needs a longer period. Uh, I, I really feel that, you know, you're, those that are going to get the message are going to get it pretty quickly. You know, it'll, it'll be out in next Thursday's ledger. It'll also be out probably more quickly than that in the dispatch. It'll be out via our social media immediately beginning tomorrow. It'll be on the website. All of those, um, capabilities that we have, I'm sure that, you know, via the world wide web and Facebook and everything else, it'll go out tonight. But, um, so those that are going to get the message and pay attention to what we're doing here, um, they'll get it. They'll get it. It's the others that you could probably give them to Christmas. They're going to say the same thing. I didn't, I never saw anything, didn't know anything. And depending upon the circumstance and the situation of the dog itself, we would attempt to educate and work with to gain compliance rather than just slapping a fine.
August one would be a good target date. That would prevent us from doing additional education.
Absolutely not.
Beyond that.
Excellent point. Yes, Commissioner Bridges and then Commissioner.
While I walk, try to ask a question, got to run on that line through.
I, I apologize because I thought I saw your hand go up and then I didn't. I apologize.
I only got, uh, and the tethering is fine. I, I think it should be put, put in effect tonight. Uh, looking at the adequate shelter, a constructive solid wood would have a covered entrance, a flexible windproof material or a self-closing swinging door. But going a little extreme, we're going to put a, I mean, what are you going to, how do you put a self-closing swinging door on a dog house?
It's, it's, or, it's not everything. It's, you know, like a regular dog kennel, as long as it's got a hole in it. I mean, if you want to put a swing door.
It says, it says it's got a flexible windproof material or a self-closing swinging door.
It does say that.
And it should say or.
So it do, it, it does. So, so that means that a dog house without a covered door would not be accepted.
Well, just constructive solid wood, all weather resistant material.
So that's an, that's an interesting point because in the summertime.
We need to.
A door, a, a door on a dog house would actually be pretty bad. I mean, you know, it would be hotter to be in the house out of the sun than it would be to be. Should it?
So we need to add the word or.
Well, no, I think we've, we've made this, the dog houses too, too fancy.
I think we did.
I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm just, you know, I mean, but, and, and, and for that reason, we're going to end up with, you know, some, some very, very subjective people wanting to hold people accountable at this level because of a failing of, of doors, opening, closing, the length of the rope, the type of the rope, the harness that was in the other part of the ordinance. And, and some of these things make the, the sheer expense of just owning a dog that much more expensive and, and more neglectful. So some things we, we need to concede on and let people choose certain devices. But if the tethering, the, the ton of that dog is the issue, let's just stick to that part of it. Because the, the problem is, is that, that we're, that we're saying that it's unsafe for the dog and, and that's ill treatment of the dog. But, but are we going to go as far as micromanaging the, the type and style of house? And, and, you know, it says wood and the harness and, you know, all of these type things. I mean, because if someone doesn't have ten feet in their backyard, you know, they don't have ten feet. I mean, so what, what, what is that person supposed to do?
Uh, personally, I think they shouldn't keep a dog tied up in the backyard that's smaller than ten feet, but that's just my opinion.
That's fine, but every yard does not have an acceptable ten feet. Your, your children's playground may be here, your dog may be tethered there, and it, and they may not want those two to be interfacing with each other within that ten feet.
It'd actually be twenty because if you've got a chain and you've got a ten-foot tether, you've got ten feet this way and ten feet that way.
What's that, a dog's?
It's twenty feet.
I mean, so, so we may be creating other issues for many of our citizens. I mean, it, it.
I, I don't see it, but, um.
If I can ask the simple question, the, the main concern is the tethering of dogs.
That's right. That's the main concern.
Extremely long times.
Stick to that.
That's our objective.
That's right.
Uh, as far, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Gilreath, we're getting a little beyond, I think, when we get to telling people what type of dog house they should have, what type of.
Well, I, I think that really the, the main part was just to, to make sure that the dog house is solid, it is dry.
Yeah, yeah.
And it is warm. Um, I think where it says about the, um, the, the covered entrance with a self-closing door, I think they should say or, you know, that's. I've never seen a dog house with a self-closing door.
No, I, no, I've not, but I can tell you I had a neighbor who put a ceiling fan in his dogs.
I see dog houses that are slitted with, uh, basically roofing felt type material. And the animal goes in and out. That is the same thing that it's calling for here.
Or that heavy clear plastic.
I think as long as the house is warm in the winter.
That's what we're striving for. I mean.
Then it's the tethering part.
The tethering and humane treatment of the animal and shelter. Um, I'm all for that. Uh, we may need to reword.
So.
Reword it.
Related to that, because Commissioner Kern is the one that pointed that out, do you, do you suggest, um, getting rid of the discussion about the door altogether? Do you, and leaving the discussion about the, the quality of the rest of the dog house so that an animal has adequate shelter? You, you called attention to this. Did you have particular thoughts in mind? Yes, sir.
We, we could just delete that line.
Well, it needs adequate shelter. I don't know that you got to go in all the details. It's got to have a slow roof away from the door and, um, I think you're getting a little bit, um, extreme. I, I think as, as Phil said, the main thing is the tether. That that is what this started out for.
Yeah. Well, we could get, we could just delete that line about the, the door.
You're putting that in the form of a motion, sir.
What, do we delete the line?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll put, I'll put that in the form of a motion that we delete the line covered by, uh, windproof material or self-closing swing door.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And then, um, I think, uh, Commissioner Gilreath, your comments about the, I think the way I'm looking at the mention of the cable trolley system is that that's just an example, not a requirement. And I think somebody couldn't be accused of inappropriately tethering their dog if their yard was too small for a ten-foot tether, but they still had a ten-foot tether. And they would need the letter of the law.
Well, that's where common sense comes in, doesn't it?
Yeah, I think that, you know, I think, I, I think the goal is to, yeah.
Not just have animals abused. I think that's the goal.
Yeah, that's right.
Right. So we have a motion from, oh, Commissioner Bridges. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I go along with a lot of the discussion that we've had. And in particular, I think the emphasis has to be on the tethering. You know, we, we certainly want the dog house to be a house that's not leaking and, you know, it serves no purpose. So, so we definitely want a house that's, has some stability to it. The, the thing that I'm concerned about is who's going to be responsible? I know that there was some discussion about, well, neighbors might see something that they don't like. And, and, and I could just see a whole big problem with neighbors reporting on other neighbors. And I, and I realize that, that, that kind of stuff goes on. But I think the enforcement part of this has to be done through law enforcement. And, and if, you know, is it going to be just the animal shelter and their officers that would go in? Or will the police department be involved in it? Will our sheriff's deputy have to have somebody designated to sort of, you know, look into stuff like it? I mean, are, have we had discussions with law enforcement officials about what they think we need to do to be able to enforce something like this? I mean, is it going to be just the animal shelter and neighbors or other law enforcement officers? Is a trooper, you know, highway patrol going to be involved in something like this? Yeah, I think we need to have a discussion with the sheriff, the police chief, whether it be the new police chief, um, um, about how are we going to address this? And, and that may take, and that may take three or four weeks.
It may, it may.
You know what I mean, to, to.
It may. My take on it is, um. Commissioner Bridges and, uh, the Board of Commissioners for the City of Oxford, that if you adopt this, it becomes another section in our existing code of ordinances and is enforced in the same fashion as any other code violation throughout that code of ordinances. You want to chime in on it?
That's right. It would be up to the city police department to enforce it. It would be the city police, it wouldn't be the highway patrol, it'd be the city of Oxford police department.
Right.
Probably in conjunction with the animal control of the sheriff's department.
Exactly right.
Commissioner Gilreath.
My, my concern would be how far will we be taking this ordinance? Because we, in, in this document that we have before us, it, it describes the structure itself. But what if the person's dog is not tethered, but he doesn't have an adequate, adequate house and it's leaking and this, that, and the other? I mean, so now we're differentiating between possibly a dog who's not tethered, but still doesn't have a good living situation. I mean, so are, are we going to be setting ourselves up for a level of micromanaging something and splitting hairs because one dog is tethered, one is not? You know, one has a decent house, another one is not? I mean, so I just, I don't want us to get ourselves in a quandary when trying to enforce something because we have all these different variables that each household, each animal situation presents itself.
Well, there's already ordinances on the books that, that control how a dog, how big a yard, you know, whether they're got adequate food, housing, shelter. There's already ordinances on the book about that. So we're not going into new territory there. It's, it's under the animal.
Attorney Burnett, I think you could correct me, but my assumption is that the quality of the housing is related to the fact that.
The dog is tethered?
No, excuse me, that the dog would be tethered nearby and if it needs shelter, then it needs to have an opportunity to go into adequate shelter. So I view the two as being linked. But if the dog is not being tethered, it's not, the ordinance is specific to tethering, not animal housing. So it would seem to me that it is, it is linked to that one thing. And then to go, as we talked about earlier, that once upon a time, our planning department consisted of Cheryl Hart, who was responsible for all the planning and all the code enforcement. And so the only code enforcement that she had the capacity to do was to respond on a complaint basis. And so with respect to the questions about the infringement on time, I'm viewing it as when somebody sees an extraordinary situation, they are likely to call one of us here or code enforcement or somebody to say, can you do something about this extraordinary situation? In which case, at that point, it gets referred to the appropriate department. department, which would be the police department, is that correct? But it would not be, um, people cruising to find tethering infractions.
Animal Control, I believe, would be the first stop. They would be the first stop, the same as any other animal cruelty laws. If you, you called Animal Control and they come out and check it out, that would be the first call. If they need assistance from the police department, I'm sure they would, as they have done in the past, they would call them.
That be the case?
This tethering ordinance would basically take another step, in my opinion, beyond what Granville County Animal Control is currently doing. So again, it gives us another tool in the toolbox to go a little bit further in protecting our four-legged friends from abuse. You know, we have, uh, in, in the past requested that, um, Animal Control do a little more in situations like this and they visited this specific, uh, situation, uh, with an animal and did not take that extra step because they didn't have something like this on the books. In my opinion, they could have, based on the conditions presented, uh, for that animal, but, um, this gives us the opportunity and certainly, you know, you can contact Animal Control first regarding an issue or a concern that you have. In a situation that includes tethering and would also include, you know, lack of food, lack of water, poor living conditions, mistreatment, all of those things, we would have both investigate that incident and do what needed to be done in order to, um, mediate, correct it.
Excellent. Thank you.
One other quick question.
Yes, sir.
Oh, it also says that the doghouse should be four inches above the ground.
Right.
There are certain doghouse igloos and all that sit on the ground with a, with a floor on it, so it wouldn't be the four inches.
They're supposed to be for flooding, you know, it rains heavy, the water goes in, that's the reason for the four inches. But the, the, um, uh, the animal that brought all this forward to me, the doghouse is woefully inadequate. It leaks, it is on the ground, it is filthy with mud, old blankets. It's certainly not up to the standards in the current, it's in the current ordinance of animal cruelty. But, um, so that's what brought the, the housing thing up. I think that's already in, in the regular ordinance, is the four inches above ground.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion made. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, Commissioner?
No, 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 wait.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Tovey to adopt this ordinance with the elimination of the line, uh, on paragraph A under adequate shelter that says a covered entrance by flexible wood and proof material or self-closing swinging door, the, we, with the elimination of that, the motion is on the floor by Commissioner Tovey. Uh, all those in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Commissioner, oh, yes, ma'am. Okay, so we have, uh, six in favor and one against. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, did we select a date for this?
First of August.
That was the recommendation, if that is still agreeable to you, Mr. Thornton. Okay. Excellent. Thank you for this robust discussion. And with that, uh, let me go back to my agenda and, um, Mr. Thornton, do you want to discuss your item now or do you want to accept the consent agenda first?
Let's do that.
Okay. Oh, and we have, oh, let, before that, let's do, uh, Commissioner, how about if we add in the additional item on the city manager's annual pay? Thank you, Mayor Protem. Commissioner Fields.
After review and discussion during closed session on July sixth, twenty twenty-one, the city manager's performance and has a annual appraisal, which included prevailing pay rates of city managers in the area, consider increasing his pay from one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars, one thousand.
One hundred.
One hundred and eighteen dollars. Y'all see it.
One hundred and eighteen thousand.
One hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars, seventy-five cents, to one hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, the personnel committee recommend increasing the city manager's pay.
So there you have it, from one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents to one hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifteen. And do you make that recommendation in the form of a motion?
I make that in the form of a motion.
Okay. We have a motion. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously and it comes with thanks to our city manager for, uh, his excellent work over the past year getting us through COVID and, um, putting us in a strong financial condition so that Oxford can feel good. If the unexpected arises, that we're in a position to weather that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we move to the consent agenda, which is to accept the June financial report by our Finance Director Ha Kang and approve, uh, the June first agenda meeting and June eighth regular meeting minutes. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Commissioner Curran. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And then I pass the floor to you, Mr. Thornton.
All right, thank you very much. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, have this discussion this evening. I don't think it's any secret that, um, you know, we're, we're, we're within the last few weeks of Chief Coley's, um, time here with the City of Oxford. And as such, we need to begin the process, the search process, uh, for the new City of Oxford Chief of Police. And, uh, it is for that purpose that I desire to have this conversation with the board this evening. Um, it is in regards to the process, the search process that we wish to, um, involve ourselves in, uh, to seek the, the most appropriate individual to, to serve, uh, the City of Oxford. Uh, I think everyone understands that, um, the Chief of Police position is unique, uh, it's a little bit different, typically than how other department head positions are typically, um, done as far as a search, or it certainly can be. I have seen such. I think everyone on this board and probably everyone in this room has seen recently some of the processes that Durham, Raleigh, others have recently or and or going through currently, uh, seeking, uh, similar individual for their Chief of Police. Um, and that's really why I'm here tonight. I've been through, uh, a number of Chief of Police searches, uh, during my time as a city and town manager in the state of North Carolina over the years. And, you know, it, it is something that, um, a city manager is intelligent enough, having gained that experience, to make sure that, uh, he has a good understanding of what the board desires to do in that search process. Uh, the search process can be as simple as what we do for most of our other positions, uh, which is to list it in every available, um, publication and opportunity to, uh, list it that we have available to us, you know, including the League of Municipalities and Association of Chiefs of Police and all those types of things, and get that information out there and start, um, receiving applications and resumes and going through the process of narrowing them down and doing all those things to get it to a point to where we, um, are in the, um, throes or final throes of, of figuring out who that is going to be based upon the strength of application and interviews and all of those kind of things that you would traditionally do, uh, to fill a position, or it can be much more involved. I think you have seen some of the other communities, especially those that are a little bit larger than us, get involved with a consultant to, um, make sure that the process is a more, um, open process where there is engagement with the public, um, and that the candidates, uh, especially the final candidates, uh, are required basically to engage with the public, to engage with certain community groups, uh, give answers and they're evaluated on that as part of the decision-making process. Um, so it can run the gamut and I'm really interested, uh, this evening in trying to get some feedback from this board as to, um, just where you envision taking this process. Human Resources and I have done a little, you know, uh, ahead of time, uh, looking into, uh, or gaining some proposals from some of these consulting companies that do this type of work. You're interested in that. Um, I have a number of those proposals can, can give you an idea of what that expense would be for them to do that. Um, you know, it, it is a, an involved process, as you can imagine. And if you want to do that, that is fine. Uh, we can certainly do that and begin that engagement, uh, very, very shortly. Uh, and engagement with a company like that, they would typically work with the city in creating the advertising, making sure that it gets to, uh, everyone's eyes and ears that is out there throughout the law enforcement community so that it is, um, very well exposed even nationally. So that we would get a variety of candidates. Having been through this before, um, I hired a Chief of Police in my last position about eight or nine years ago and uh, we did not go through that process and believe me, I got applications from Pennsylvania, Ohio, Indiana, New Jersey, all over the place. So, you know, the exposure is going to get there. That, that, that's not limited to just engaging with one of these consulting firms. Uh, you, you can do that and that information will get out there within that community. But, you know, there, depending upon, uh, your opinion, uh, whether or not utilizing a consulting firm to, to do this process is worthwhile or not, uh, if you choose to not engage with a company like that, we would still likely be utilizing the process of creating an assessment, uh, board and panel here, uh, for the city, getting some people, uh, who serve in those positions that are relevant in law enforcement to be a part of those assessment panels and helping us to judge and engage and rate prospective candidates and, and do all those kinds of things. And we would create an assessment board panel, uh, process here, uh, if that is your desire. Um, and I would love to have that conversation about what you guys are, are thinking. You would like to see so that, um, you may have thought of something that we have not and we could potentially incorporate that, uh, into the process, whatever process is chosen. So I'd like to kind of open the floor now for board members and just you let me know what you would like to see and, uh, we'll do our best to, um, to accommodate that, uh, within the rea- within reason of the best of our ability.
Okay, Mayor Protem.
First thing, I, I would say I have complete confidence in your ability to hire a manager and whatever your decision is. Um, I do, I am in favor of the assessment center. Um, the last one, the, when Chief Coley was hired, um, I think it had some citizen input. I do believe Ms. Rogers, uh, served on that committee and a couple of other people. My first question is, is it in the budget? Is it, I mean, are we just going to require?
As far as the hiring of a consultant?
Right, right.
Um, not specifically, no. It, it is not. Not at this time.
How much would that typically run up?
Uh, what we have, uh, ascertained from contacting a number of these companies to do a Chief of Police search, is in the range of twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Can I say something?
Oh, let's, let Mayor Protem finish.
I'll come next.
Okay, Commissioner Tovey?
Um, I, I can't say that I'm really in favor of using a consultant. I'm like Mayor Protem. I've got every confidence in Allen and whatever committee he sets up to, to help choose it. I mean, I don't think that we can afford the, the, the financial and the time that it's going to take to get a consulting firm. I've got every confidence in Allen and I would prefer to go that way and, and keep it in-house rather than uh, spend money elsewhere. That's just my opinion.
Question from Mayor Protem. On the last pound of the board, I know you said, um, Ms. Rogers was on, you know, a lot of, um, public, but who else?
I can't remember who it was. You, you, people were inviting and some people were at, you know, they volunteered.
Uh-huh.
So.
Were there any other law enforcement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, there were several, like Person County and.
It was very organized.
Okay.
And I, and I'll be, I don't think they used the firm. I think that.
Nope, Randy Heeman did it.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. If it's something like that, I'm, I'm good with it, but it was very organized.
Good.
We had an opportunity, if I remember correctly, that they came here and we spoke with them. It was not all of them, I think it was.
Probably had it narrowed down to like the final three or something along those lines. That's, that's typical.
And also it's important, I appreciate you asking us our input, but ultimate decision really does lie with you.
It does, but a good city manager's smart enough to, yeah, this position is a little bit different. At the same time, there have been more city managers fired over chiefs of police than anything else. I've learned in my twenty-eight years.
I know that's right.
Just a little.
That's good. Now, we, I've been looking in this direction. Anybody down here have anything that they want to bring up, any comments?
How, how were, how were the members actually chosen to be on the board and, um, in the selection process?
Okay, Ms. Rogers, do you mind speaking? How were, how, how were you all chosen to speak, I mean, to represent on the assessment?
If I remember correctly, we were chosen, um, cannot think of who the city manager was.
Oh, it was Randy Heeman.
Yes.
And Carol Dorsey, was it?
Carol, um.
Dorsey.
Did, um, dynamite job and, um, organizing this and having role play and Police Chief from, um, areas like Apex and so forth. It was just absolutely fantastic.
That's right. There was this role-playing thing. There was a.
And, and we could sit in, but we, you know, we couldn't say anything quite naturally, but, you know, it was.
And I think I do believe that the ci- because the city manager was also new to the area. I mean, in that sense, we're fortunate that Allen has been here with us now. You're in your fourth year?
Fifth year.
Fifth year, starting your fifth year. So he, he knows Oxford a little better and that's to our benefit, but at that time, you know, I think there were a number of suggestions about key stakeholders that we felt in the city would be good, would, would, would be worthwhile representatives to sit on the assessment committee, but I don't recall the size of it anymore.
I don't either, but I know there was an application process, just like it is to serve on him.
Okay.
On the, you know, to serve on any committee, so.
Well, Mayor Thornton, I mean, not Allen, Randy Heeman had never been a city manager.
Right.
He had no experience as a manager until he came here.
Oh, Randy?
Randy.
Right, so we would, we do have experience.
That's right. Yep, Commissioner.
My biggest concern would be major representation from all the different communities that we, that Oxford actually entails as well as, you know, the socioeconomic, um, and major diversity, just to make sure that, that, that we're asking all of the right questions from all the different perspectives and not just one-sided to leaning toward the, you know, the downtown part versus, you know, the inner city, you know, so. I, I like what I'm hearing, Mayor Protem and Ms. Rogers. Thank you for sharing that.
It was very organized. It was very organized.
I don't remember any of that.
You don't?
I don't remember any of us being approached to serve on it.
I don't know if we served on it, we were on it, but...
Yeah, not us. They came here.
I didn't know until he was hired that any of that mattered.
And typically, board members are not a part of that assessment panel per se process. They are involved, you know, if you do a community engagement session or something along those lines, you are invited to listen to the candidates and can potentially ask questions and do those types of things. But, you know, as far as being completely, fully engaged in that process, typically that is not done. But every place can be a little different.
No, it's not, no.
And I, I believe that part of, and you can correct me, Ms. Rogers, if I'm not recalling this correctly, but I have a feeling that in, with each candidate, there was a planned event that was unexpected that put them in a predicament and so you could watch how they responded.
That's typical, the scenarios and role-playing and all those types.
But it was during the assessment, you know, it was like, you are...
Okay, so...
So tonight you're asking, you're asking which way the board wants you to go?
That is correct, that is correct. If you're comfortable with staff doing that and taking on that role, we are certainly comfortable in so doing and the advertising for the chief's position will begin tomorrow.
I'm very comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with that.
And then I, I think though, that as you progress and have thoughts about developing your assessment center, I suspect that there would be board members that would like to hear an update and have an opportunity to input with respect to key stakeholders and key informants.
Absolutely, you will be fully informed of that developmental process that we go through in order to establish really the process. We've got the outline of it and we'll fill in the lines as we go here and provide that information to you. So I thank you for that, thank you for the clarity. I'll also let you know that I do have an interim chosen, ready and prepared to step in. So there will be a steady hand at the helm of the Oxford Police Department. I know that, I believe that it would be a very good choice and one that's very well received. They have a lot of experience with the city of Oxford, Police Department, familiar with everything and will be a steady hand. And that announcement will be made tomorrow.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Okay, any further questions for the manager? All right, well then, last comments, Commissioner Gilreath?
Did we have any follow-up with, last meeting, you talked about having a meeting with the consulting firm from Elmwood. Where are we on that now?
I did. As a matter of fact, we are going to get our first look at we being staffed, the generated report Thursday. And after that, it is likely that we will call for a Public Works Committee meeting to discuss that, potentially as soon as the following week. I think we're right now looking at potentially, oh, excuse me, let me hit my calendar real quick. Where are we in? We're in July, the following week, potentially the 22nd, I want to say. But we'll, we'll get that notice out after I give the chairman a call to see what his schedule and his availability is. But we will be conducting a Public Works Committee meeting probably the following week once we have seen what the report provides us as far as recommendations or options. So you'll get that within a week.
And I read in the paper or read someplace about some increased police monitoring of the cemetery. Why is that or what's going on?
It's not being increased, they're just, we've kind of opened it up a little bit more typically. Well, I'm not going to say typically, that's the wrong word to use. Previously, in the past, the cemetery has, has been closed during whatever the sign out there says. Basically, after it gets dark and, you know, other hours, we wanted to, after receiving a number of calls from, from people wanting to visit their loved ones during those periods of time when the cemetery is closed and they couldn't get in, wanted to open it up. So we thought we would try that and leave the cemetery open to people to come when they can because people have to work.
All the time.
All the time.
Because the sign out there definitely has open and close time.
Right now it is a, is a test period. We're checking to see how it's going and thus far, to my knowledge, I've not had any complaints, concerns. I talked to Chief Colley about it yesterday, was it yesterday, Monday? Yeah, so it was yesterday. And we've not had any acts of vandalism or anything like that out there since we started opening it up. I mean, it is, it is public property. It does basically belong to the people and we just had some concern about closing it up, locking it off, not allowing people to come and see their relatives. And like the email that I sent out last week, I believe, if it becomes an issue such as that, we'll go back to it. Right now, we're hoping that people will appreciate the opportunity to pay their respects to their loved ones when they choose to do so instead of it being office hours.
What prompted us keeping it open so long? I mean, because people really asked to go and visit it, you know, in the middle of the night or whatever?
No, I don't think the middle of the night, but in the summertime, I mean, it stays light as long as nine o'clock. And we were shutting it down, whatever the hours are, trying to, sometimes...
Eight to eight or eight.
Sometimes we slipped up and weren't doing that because we expected, you know, the Police Department to do that, open and close it and, you know, they're previously engaged or for whatever reason, it kind of slipped through the cracks with a lot of new personnel coming into the Police Department and, you know, we felt like, well, hey, let's, let's keep a public property open and see how it goes and give the people the opportunity to pay their respects and to do the right thing and making sure that the cemetery is as it should be. And if that would, if that is the case, we would like to keep it open. But, you know, it's kind of like your kids, you know, you give them the opportunity to take the car out or, you know, stay out till midnight. If they come in at three o'clock in the morning, then you rescind those rights and privileges, same kind of thing. But thus far, it's, it's been well-received to my knowledge and understanding. And speaking of the cemetery, I hope everybody did take notice of the information in last week's paper about the scheduled cemetery cleanup. So I hope that that will be well-received by the public and those that have loved ones there. But we're going to do a sweep of the cemetery and clean out some dead trees and some, some stuff that has been in there for too long, that has gotten weathered and all of those kind of things and just try to make it look more presentable.
Excellent, thank you. Is that, you're good to go? Okay, Commissioner Toby?
Two things really. I want to, first of all, I want to thank everybody about this ordinance for the dogs, much needed. You were. The second thing is the roundabout, I'm not sure, is it malfunctioning or something? It looks like an amusement park ride at the moment. It seems to be like that. I mean, that's the best way I can describe it. It might be my eyes, I don't know.
It's not your eyes, it's mine as well. But I did, before this meeting, around six twenty-five or so, send you an email. So take a look at that email, I got it today. And it comes from the DOT engineer in regards to it. So you're not the only one, I've certainly taken notice of it. I have the city engineering staff up there looking at it. We've been in touch with the Department of Transportation, they've been out, they actually sent surveying out to check it, to make sure that it has been installed as designed and intended. And they assure us that it has been. The issue, and you can read it for yourself or I'll put my eyes on and read the response that we've got for why that it was designed the way that it is. To a certain extent, you know, it is a bit of an optical illusion. You look at it from the north end of Spring headed south and it looks like it's...
That's right.
Like that. And it is to a little extent because it has to shed water. There's the slope of the road involved there. And let me, hang on just a second, I got it right here. Where is that? There it is. Where is that guy?
I thought it was going to be a big track for all the golf carts. Perhaps we could have a waterfall there.
Allen here. There it is. Oh, there you go. This is Mr. Davidson with the Department of Transportation and he is saying, "I reviewed the project with the surveyor and the curb has been installed per the plan. The reason you see such an obvious slope in the center is because there is a two-foot grade difference between the corner of Spring and Main at the library and the crown of Main Street. In order to have a smooth riding roundabout, we need to smooth out the crown points and shoulder points with a curved profile as shown below." And, you know, if you can interpret that engineering design drawing, chart thing, you're better at it than I am. I know what I see. The slope center island is a byproduct of following this existing topography. Thomas and I reviewed some possible changes in microstation and all variations require more pavement removal and major changes to how the grades change and none of the changes significantly altered the island slope. So it's not that no one else has taken notice and not seen it, it's been a subject of Facebook as well. But, you know, I believe that at, at the end of the day, when they finally complete it, they fill it in, they do the dirt, we do the landscaping, it is certainly going to be a lot less dramatic than it appears right now. So I'm going to give the DOT the benefit of the doubt that they know what they're doing. Those of us that have never filled a roundabout do not so much, but I do, I will admit that it does not look like it's completely perfectly flat like you would envision and you see the reason why.
And just to follow up on that, and I don't know whether you can answer this, always the DOT, but are they on a two-day working week or something? Because I never see anybody working on it. And we've promised that 7th of July, we finish.
Honestly, the Department of Transportation is not performing the work. They have a contractor that is performing the work under their umbrella. And so essentially, if you look at it from that perspective, every phase that they complete, the DOT must then send out an engineer to inspect and approve. So you see the bureaucracy. But I've had that conversation with the Department of Transportation as well and they still maintain that it is on schedule to be completed under the timeframe initially given for that contract.
Thank you. I'll try and keep quiet about the roundabout.
Yeah, concrete takes a little bit of time to cure as well, so you know, they've got to do things in certain steps and phases.
Thank you very much, Ellen.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Bridges?
Yes. Um, you know, I'm, I'm very happy with the discussion on the tethering law. I think it's important for us to look out for four-legged animals because they cannot oftentimes take care of themselves, although my wife is of the opinion that cats are much more capable of taking care of themselves than other animals. I want to also say that I've been on board, you know, close to fifteen years and the issue of, you know, a swimming pool has been discussed by this board ad nauseam relative to a public swimming pool. And Mr. McCoy, I appreciate you bringing up that issue again. Well, I, I'm sure you recognize this has been a discussion for many years. And I will continue to advocate for a public swimming pool that is accessible to everyone. And I understand there's some folk don't care about whether or not certain folks have access to a public swimming pool. There are pools here in Oxford that are not open to everyone and we know that. Ruckert Park is not accessible to all of our kids who live in the intercity. So that is part of the reason that there are some folks who are advocating for a nice, beautiful public pool. I see folks with swimming suits on enjoying pools, the nice blue water and the, and the umbrellas and, and all of the festivities that come with the swimming pool. Ruckert Park is not accessible to all of our kids. And that is why I think that we need a pool more centrally located so that not only are young people, but also our older folks can go to the pool and wade and do their little muscle exercises. As it relates to comments in this boardroom, you know, I have always said that it is okay to disagree. Mr. McCoy has disagreed on a number of issues. There are other folks who have disagreed on a number of issues relative to what this board has done. But the one thing I can say about Mr. McCoy is that every time he has disagreed and he's been in this boardroom, he has respectfully disagreed. Name-calling, raising your voice at an official is inappropriate. And I still stand by what I said. When a person in the public comes up to an official and name-calls them, raises their voice at them, that is inappropriate conduct in this boardroom. And I think that the person should be warned if they do it. And then if they continue to do it, at some point, they ought to be removed by law enforcement and banned from coming to the meeting. There should be no name-calling. Anybody walks up to me and say, "Commissioner Bridges, I disagree with your position on that and I wish you felt differently about it," that's fine, but you don't call me names and then think I'm going to stand for that. I don't call anybody out in the audience any names, but I'm going to express my opinion while on this board as long as I'm here. And if it bothers you because I want equal treatment for everyone, then that's your problem. And so I hope that as we go forward, that we continue to be proud of what we do on this board. You know, I hear in one sentence, "Oh, it's an election year and we need some new blood on the board." And then I hear, "Oh, I'm happy and it's wonderful what's going on now." Isn't it interesting that at the other cycle of election, we didn't hear a whole lot of that, but now we're hearing all about this. that, but now we're hearing all about this, this election cycle? Hmm, interesting. The point that I'm gonna make is I will continue to advocate for a swimming pool, and it has nothing to do with anything other than I think everybody should have access to that kind of activity. Rucker Park is too far away, and there are some closer pools that are not open to everybody. And you know that. And so, as we go forward, Board, I hope y'all are proud of the work that we've done on the infrastructure. Yes, previous boards didn't wanna spend the money, and I appreciate it, Mayor, that you talked about, you know, the condition of some of our infrastructure. Some of our pipes were a hundred and some years old. Some of them had rust six to, six inches deep.
Some of them were wood.
Yeah, some of them were wood. And so the monies that we've spent and the great job that Ms. Ratcliffe has done, our engineer, to, to expose that, and the great work of this board to start paying for some correction, I think has, you know, is just admirable. And I'm proud of the work that I've done on this board, and I'm proud of my colleagues for recognizing that we have to think about our grandchildren and safe drinking water. And if, we wouldn't have a situation where we're gonna have 288 apartment units, 108 townhouses and units, 30 single-family units. If we don't have the infrastructure and the water and the things to do that kind of development, y'all be saying, "Well, where's the growth?" So, that being said, I'm finished.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Curran.
Yes, ma'am. About two or three months ago, I contacted Mr. Thornton, because I'd been contacted. The Rose's parking lot had turned into a truck parking lot. And I think he got in touch with Ms. Hart. I don't know if Ms. Hart would care for the police department. But I had ridden by one Sunday, and I sent to Mr. Thornton, there were 23 trucks parked at Rose's. Two weeks later, they were gone. So I commend Ms. Hart for your work and the police department for what you did too. It looked like a, well, I won't go into what it looks like. The other thing I want to bring up, if y'all, everybody saw this June financial report? Outstanding. Our revenues was over 100%. Our expenses in the drone fund was under 89%. Our water fund revenues was 131% of budget, and expenses were 91% of budget. And that, thank Mr. Thornton and everybody that works for the city of Oxford for a report like that, that's fantastic. That's why we got a fund balance above 16% is what it was when we came in.
That's right.
And we're not getting louder than every year.
And we had the warm money to buy a knuckle boom truck.
That's right.
And it's been great.
$175,000 truck. We had to finance for ten years. Thank everybody for this. That's all we got. Oh, I did, you talked about speeding on Green Street. Did you ever hear about? I went by, and I, I know it's a problem. Medical speeding when I was over there, but I didn't know if you ever heard about it.
No, I haven't, not yet.
Because he's bringing that up, I would like to throw ad that I have been called about continued speeding on Spring Street, Raleigh Street. I was walking on Raleigh Street one night around 7:30, and, and I yelled at somebody, "Slow down as they were flying by." And then, and then somebody from the reports said, "That's just, you know, what happens here normally." And Quail Ridge Road, but actually, the folks who, who were here tonight for Yard of the Month brought up that it's, they feel like people are racing there. So I wonder if at this point it's appropriate, Mr. Thornton and Commissioner Bullock, that maybe we set up a, well, is it Public Works Streets or Public Works? Yeah, or Public Safety, but we don't have enough police to be sending them around, and so we need to be looking at whether it's stop signs that have done an amazing job on Forest that Commissioner Curran suggested. Stop signs aren't always the thing, but can we look at having a more robust discussion about how to address speeding?
I don't mind having that, that conversation at all. I think that giving us these target areas, Police Department is represented here tonight. I think they'll, they'll take some steps to be a presence in those areas, or more of a presence in those areas to help deter some of that activity. I see it going on on just about every street in Oxford. I'm just gonna be honest with you. It is a very, very difficult thing to catch everybody speeding. It just is. I sit out on my front porch and see them coming through there, and it looks like they're doing 100 miles an hour with the stop sign still there. But that's me, I'm getting off, and, you know, I stand out there and yell and scream at cars, that kind of thing, but for what good that it'll do? So, you know, I, I don't want to get our hopes and aspirations up of we're going to stop speeding in Oxford. We're not, I mean, we can do everything that we can do to curtail it to the best of our ability, because, I'll be honest with you, I've worked all across the state of North Carolina, and this is a concern that has been expressed in the 28-plus years that I've been doing this, in every place that I have worked. And, you know, that spans three decades plus, and it's not going to change. People just, they do what they wanna do. I see them driving down the road speeding on their phones, you know, or eating McDonald's at the same time, all that kinda stuff. So we do our best. Can we do better? Certainly we can. But we, like you spoke to, we, we do not have unlimited resources. We do not have the ability to be out there on the single street night and day, you know, trying to catch speeders. We do that. But I will say that if, you know, if there are specific areas of concern, I think that we would prefer to do what we have done in the past with requests that we have received, like what we got from Mr. Woodleaf out in his area, and allow the police department to go out there and look at that area and see if there's anything specific related to that concern that can be done to measure speeding taking place in those areas, to see what is actually happening, and make recommendations, as they have done in the past, for specific areas. So what I'm hearing is if, if there are other areas other than Spring, Raleigh, Green, and Quail Ridge Road, let me know. We'll have the police department, you know, go out there and be as much of a presence as they can. I'm sure everybody got 'em.
The judge and myself have spoke about right in front of the courthouse.
And on the other end of Wilmsboro Street, you can't pull out of a Food Line store without possibly hitting somebody because they're coming so fast up the hill.
Yep, I understand. I do, it's a problem all over, and, you know, we'll do everything that we can do to curtail that, including potentially looking at some alternative methods to inhibit the opportunity to speed. But, you know, I'm personally not the biggest fan of speed bumps. I just, I'm not a fan. I am not. Just to be honest with you, I'm not a fan. I've been places where they've been installed because of conversations such as this, and then the next conversation that is had after they're installed is, "Is the city gonna pay me for, you know, busting my rim, busting my tire, breaking my axle?"
Not if you're speeding.
So, you know, but you can't tell them that they're speeding if you weren't out there to actually figure out if they were actually speeding or not. But that's the next conversation that comes. So, you know, I've seen places that have installed them, six months later, or taken them out. So I, I, I think there's the opportunity to look at it from a fresh perspective of what can we do? Part of it is just pure enforcement, pure presence of law enforcement, putting the signs out there to give everybody an indication of how fast they're traveling. Some folks, that makes a difference. Some folks, they could care less, and they could right on going. Because I do notice, you know, where I live, that a lot of them are the same folks, same cars, that drive that fast constantly. And, you know, a few good tickets would, would see us standing in line for two or three hours outside the courthouse, and then getting a fine and getting court calls would curtail that activity to a certain extent, but we can't catch everybody. So, Mayor, I'm certainly open. I'm sure that the police department is open. The appropriate committee for that would be the Public Safety Committee. And we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay, so we'll, is that Commissioner Bridges? Is that something that you wanted, or do you wanna leave it to the manager and the police chief for right now, and the police officers?
I don't mind hav- having a meeting. I don't think you, the only choice is a speed bump. You know, there are things called speed humps, where it's just uncomfortable for you to drive fast. You know, where your car will go in the air, you know, if you're driving too fast. Like, you know, right in front of the courthouse, a speed hump, I think, would slow folks down. And there are a lot of people-
At that crosswalk.
Right, at that crosswalk. There are a lot of people that come there that sheriff deputies have said to me, they've seen people almost get hit. And I, and I hope we don't wait until that happens.
Yep. Again, I will revisit that. They're speeding when they leave that. It ain't just right in front of the courthouse.
Right, right, I understand.
I will revisit that issue, but again, those are DOTs for this. They would have the final say for anything installed on their streets in their rights of way. I did make contact after that previous conversation that we had with the Department of Transportation. I can't remember exactly the response that I got back, but I will revisit that tomorrow morning, now that it's been fresh on my mind again.
Can I just add to that? I think I, I suggested some time ago about outside the courthouse to have the crosswalk raised, and I think the response from NC DOT was they don't allow any raised crosswalks in their jurisdiction. So I think that was the answer. And that's what I wanted, was a raised crosswalk, you know, but DOT won't allow it.
You can still check.
I can, I'll revisit the issue. Sometimes the squeaky wheel gets the grits, so we'll see what we can do.
Excellent. Thank you. Mayor Proton?
A few points. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and staying with us so diligently. Henderson Street, is that on the paving list?
Yes.
Can that go first? I mean, no, seriously, it's, it's bad on Henderson Street. It's very bad. Secondly, I don't know how it was conveyed or misconstrued that I was speaking to Commissioner Bridges last week when I left the meeting. That certainly was not my intention, but apparently some people thought that I was speaking to you, or I had spoken to you and called you names. So if I'm wrong, please, could you tell everyone that I didn't, that you weren't referring to me? I think it's evident now, because I, but I wasn't talking to you.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay. So last Monday, at our agenda session, I left the meeting. Yes, because I came, you know, with flashbacks. So it was conveyed that I was angry with you, and I was speaking to you about-
I don't know who, I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, thank you very much.
And then expressed that, you didn't call me any names.
Thank you so much. That, that's all I know. And, and the next thing I want to say, sitting up here is not easy, and, and I know living in the public eye is definitely not easy, and we're certainly not doing it for the money. We are doing this hopefully out of our hearts and really wanting to see the city of Oxford grow and prosper. When I first came to the board, I was a young person, and as my niece says, I didn't have dust in my hair. Now I do have dust in my hair. So I call it wisdom, but I've learned a lot on your, on this board. And it's not easy. And you don't have to be young to run for office. So the filing period ends Friday at 12:00. So if you're listening, whatever your statement was, please go, and we'll be glad to have you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Give back Commissioner Bridges' statement. And I don't think I have ever made the statement that there is not a pool accessible to all citizens in Oxford. I'm for a centralized pool for all citizens of Oxford, for the access of it, because I cannot see how children from Graball, Raleigh Road, out by Old Walmart can get to, to the pool that we now, the city now has, Rucker Park. It's dangerous for them to try to ride bikes out there. It's dangerous for a group of them to try to walk out there because there's no shoulders on the road. I'm grateful for Rucker Park. I'm grateful. My church uses that facility. But I am hoping that before I leave this world, that there is a centralized pool where everybody can get to on sidewalks, they can ride their bikes. I can get to maybe even if I have to be confined to a wheelchair, but that, that's my dream. That's my dream. I am proud to be on this board. It was an eye-opener when I got on the board and Amy Ratcliffe showed me the pictures of the pipes that the water I was drinking was coming through. Coagulated cardboard. I got sick, we were up in Oak Hill, at Camp Oak Hill, and I got sick when I looked at that. But I did not know of it. I did not know the previous boards had been sitting. I thank this board for the initiative and the insight to look beyond where we were then to today, to say we've got to do better. And I'm proud of what we have done. The fact that our manager has led us to do our work first before the state come in to do theirs, so they won't have to tear up, or we tear up, what have you. I'm proud of this board. There's some wisdom, there's history on this board, and there's vision on this board. And today I saw a phenomenal thing, and it comes from leadership from our police department when a cruiser stopped and handed a bag of clothing to a homeless woman and talked with her, and they had no idea that I, as a commissioner, was sitting and watching them. But it made my heart feel good, because that comes from leadership, and that comes from leadership of caring, and that's what Oxford is all about. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Bullock?
I've had a chance to discuss this with the city manager, but just to make the board aware, I've asked him to look at intersection between military and Forest. Bushes there are grown out to the point with little, you had to drive out into the intersection to go. So that's gonna be looked at, and see what can be done. Problem is, of course, that's, we talk about bushes on private property, but we're gonna see what can be done.
Excellent.
Madam, may I would like to add one thing that I thought was the craziest thing Oxford could have ever done, and that was changing the style of stop signs on Hicks Mill Road. For about 35 years, you could go down at the corner of College and drive all the way down Hicks Mill Road to the intersection of Highway 96. Quarter mile. You wanna test your car, that was a good place to do it. Well, when they first put those stop signs there, I thought, "Oh, my God, what in the world?" But having continued to live there, it has slowed down the traffic. Now, those that really don't care, they don't care if the police stops them or not. But as far, overall, it worked, Alan. It, it, it did work reversing the stop signs at the corner of Hicks Mill and Nollan, then down at Woodson and Hicks Mill. You know, people are still confused, you know, with geographic, and, you know, they're like, "Oh, my God, a stop sign."
Exactly.
But it works. It works. Teresa's laughing. It threw her.
And, and, yeah, it drives me batty for the quirky signs around here sometimes. And you, you inadvertently-
Run it.
Run it. I mean, and-
But, but from a person that lives in that area- it, it has slowed down the speed in which people go from one end of Hicksmill Road to the other end, regardless of the railroad track. They never cared about the railroad track, but it has slowed down, so.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, Commissioner.
I wanted to also say thank you to the Police Department, but I believe she has to leave. I had commented on the three-way stop there on, on Forest that I continue to see people drive straight through it and several rolling stops. So, the police made a presence. And I think a few high-speed permits were written and it has much improved.
Oh, great.
So, I wanted to tell them thank you.
Bravo, well, bravo. Thank you for bringing that up. Bravo to the police and bravo to Commissioner Kern for, for putting that on the table. So, you know, good.
That's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. There are a couple of quick things that I wanna bring up. It is late, so I don't want a discussion about them, but Mr. Thornton, can you at least give us an update on where we are on that pay study for the Police Department specifically? That we had a discussion when we were in our personnel committee, meeting before the budget was adopted.
That process is set to begin the first week of office.
Okay, excellent. And I am hoping that at, at some point, and it doesn't have to be tonight and it can be in an email, but I know that there should be money coming from the American Rescue Plan. And are we going to be able to have a discussion as a board? So.
Absolutely.
What are your thoughts?
Absolutely. For those of you that are not aware, and I'm not gonna get into a long conversation here going on ten o'clock at evening about this topic. Everybody already, I think, is aware that every city in the United States is getting an allocation of funding from the federal government as part of the American Recovery Act. We, we are, there are guidelines and parameters for that. If you've read the league letters that I am sending out, ARA is mentioned in that repeatedly. I encourage you to go to those websites that are linked in that information, read that information. We will be having a conversation, discussion about those funds and how to best utilize them to make as much of a significant as we thought, impact as we can here in Oxford. I'm sure everybody's got a different idea about how to potentially utilize those funds. And we'll be having that conversation. I think that another part of everything that I have seen and everything that has certainly been sent out to elected officials is to use good common sense and caution and time in thinking about the use of those funds as a one-time deal. We are anticipating receiving the first annual disbursement. It's gonna be made in two, two payments over two fiscal years as soon as this week. As a matter of fact, I signed the documents today to receive the first installment. The second one will be coming in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. You have until, I believe, the end of December twenty-twenty-six to actually expend the funds. So, you know, it's not like we need to do it tomorrow.
Excellent.
But it is, it is something that we do need to have a conversation about in order to start formulating a plan for those funds and how they can be best utilized for the City of Oxford.
So, just very quickly, do you see that happening in a committee meeting or bringing it up at an agenda session?
I believe that it's, you know, it's something that we'll discuss as a full board.
Okay.
I don't know that it needs to be in a committee forum, it needs to be a discussion of the full board.
Okay, that's fine. And lastly, for another time. How much money are you really talking about, Alan? What money is this again?
This is the American Recovery Act that was adopted and passed by Congress back in January, February roughly timeframe. And the money is finally making its way to the local governments for which it was intended. If you've been following it, all municipalities in, in the United States, all counties and even all states are receiving a, a amount. The state of North Carolina is set to receive close to two billion dollars from that package. And if you're following the legislature down in Raleigh, there's a whole lot of different ideas as to how that is to be expended. The governor has stepped out there with his plan, but of course, you know, it's gotta go through the legislative process.
But Oxford's portion of that is?
Oxford's portion of that is approximately two point eight two million dollars.
Ooh.
So, we need to be thoughtful.
Don't know that that is part of what is that. There, it, it, let me, let me ask it, also add this. There are requirements for the expenditure of those funds. There are guidelines. They are a bit looser than the previous CARES Act funds that we've received. The CARES Act was a tenth of this.
But some of them are allocated elsewhere.
There are guidelines for it. We'll certainly cover those in the conversation that we have with this board. But for now, I would encourage you to go to those links. Hawk, what is the name of that one? It's late, I can't remember it, the actual. Anyway. I'll send you more information on that, but all you have to do is revisit any of those Friday updates and the legislative bulletin that comes out with it. You'll see, if you go down the page, the links to that information, that's all contained on the league site.
I just think I wanted to make sure that the board would be part of the discussion going forward.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Excellent. Anything else on your end?
Very quickly, you have the manager's report. I will not read it for you. Please do so at your leisure. Contact me if you have any questions, concerns about it. You also have the staffing monthly update report. Couple of other things, very briefly. I believe it's next Saturday, the two-hundred-seventy-fifth celebration event at the Gap for Granville County. The city will participate in that. Hopefully, it'll be dry and not nine-hundred degrees out there. But it is a public event. It's not just for those of us sitting up here. Please come out if you can come. It is a Saturday and all the municipalities, the county and others will be out there. Other groups will be out there providing information, giveaways, all kinda stuff. There'll be a celebration celebrating Granville County's two-hundred-seventy-fifth anniversary. Had one other thing that I wanted to, to provide the board with this evening that I am hearing, you know, out in the public, and that is a concern about the Hot Sauce Festival now that Mary has departed. We got it handled. That's about what I wanna say. Staff is fully capable of making sure that all the logistics and issues are taken care of. We have been meeting frequently and numerously and will continue to do so in regards to assigning duties and responsibilities for the Hot Sauce Festival. It is our intent and our focus and our promise to make it as successful as any of the ones in the past have been and hopefully bigger and better than ever. We're looking forward to it. Let me put it that way and have every faith and belief that we'll take care of.
Excellent, thank you very much. Mr. Burnett?
Anyway, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. And I think, I was gonna say, we're ready for a motion. All in favor?